Hi, everyone. Welcome to the June 7th workshop of the Village Board. We have some board business to conduct first and then we'll move back into public hearing mode for chapter 134. The first item is opportunity to request to add and modify agenda items. I have one item to request to add, which is from our Lady of Loretto requesting a procession for the Saturday. May I add that item to the agenda? Make a motion to add it?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Raise your hand. And then I'd like to table two, the Royal Contract, item C. We have, Royal has, is already picking up on Saturday, but we need to finalize the contract for that additional day per our budget determinations. And the county attorney needs a little more time to review that addendum. Thought he'd make it for today and he hasn't. I'd like to move to table that.
Second.
Hi.
Hi.
And also table the estimate for the payers on the bike rack. We need to refresh the quote. I would move to table that. Second, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. I just have one quick thing. Under announcements, our parking home rule legislation request passed Senate yesterday. It's hopefully making to the Assembly floor, is in committee for the Assembly, being watched by Assembly member Levenburg. So I'm hoping that we can make it for the session. The session closes on at the end of the week, so.
And that's what expands.
Our.
Yeah.
That's great. Larger area of the village. Okay, so Tara Flagler is with us online. Hi Tara.
Hi.
Well, so I want to start by saying a great big giant thank you to you. There was a whole belay last week in the village about 4th July events.
Misinformation and under the same name.
Yes, and in true, in true community fashion and the way community events should be done, Tara stepped forward and said, well, I'd like to plan a parade. Can I put a proposal into the trustees? So she's with us tonight to talk about that. And we have Officer Burke here with us for any questions that he may have for you. I did speak with Mayor Winward in Nelsonville today. She is comfortable with the proposed route and says thank you as well. So talk to us. What are you thinking about?
So I'm thinking about running a parade on Saturday, July 1st around 10:30 a.m. if that works. The reason I chose that time is because from 11:30 to 4:30, we're organizing a community fun day at St. Mary's Church. And the parade would end there if it's approved. So I'd like to start down near the bandstand and come up Market Street over the bridge, up Main Street to Peak Skill Road, and then on to Chestnut Street and end at St. Mary's near the light. I've contacted quite a few people already. They know I have to get approval first, but I have a good amount committed to being in the parade, based on the approval. And the Community Day is pretty much planned and confirmed, you know, got to button up a few things and get a couple more things going. But I think it should be a great time. And once, if you guys approve, I want to do the bike contest. I know Kathleen, you had liked the bike contests, have the kids decorate and everything. We, a few years ago, we did a Girl Scout float, so we're going to look to do that again. We've called the vets and the Knights of Columbus, the ambulance corps, the firehouse, the school, Shakespeare, trying to get them involved. And trying to think of who else. You're trying to get as many community members involved as possible.
So would you imagine lineup happening on West Street?
Yes.
From New Street back to Dockside and then proceeding from there?
Correct.
Okay. Can I ask a good question? I don't know who this is directed to, but what does it take to approve a parade on a state road? Right, so both 301 and 90?
Realistically, we don't have a time to do that, especially with Memorial Day Parade. Sheriff's Office has been notified and passed on by that we're doing a parade. I've not, since I've been in the village, I've not had to get anything stated on doing a parade.
Okay. There have been. Okay. There were traditionally 4th of July parades for many, many years for a time. Numbers, participation numbers were down. And so that's why Community Day was moved to Labor Day. And I want to make sure that we're clear that yours 4th of July parade does not replace Community Day. This is an additional resident-led.
Correct.
July. And I don't know, do you, have you, I haven't seen one, West Point fires on that fires their, excuse me, their fireworks off on the 4th of July, right?
On the first.
On the first, so it little correspond?
Oh, it is on the fir-, I'm not sure.
That's what I, I don't know that that's true, but that's the information I have is that it, the fireworks will be on the first.
Okay.
You had float concerns, your float concerns.
Well, let me say one step back. Is it going to be on the first or on the fourth?
Saturday, the first.
Saturday, the first, okay. Yeah, so my concerns were the floats, how big they would be, are they just, are they mechanical? Are they, you know, being pulled by a car or are they just?
Right, so the one year that we did it, my husband drove his truck, which is a Dodge Ram 2500, and he, the girls decorated his trailer, which I think is a 14, 16-foot trailer. I'll confirm that though. And they had decorated and we put chairs inside the trailer and the girl sat in there. And then myself and another adult like walked side by side and he drove through the parade.
The other concern I would have with that is if we had an emergency and the fire truck had to get up Main Street while the vehicle was pulling the trailer, enough space to get out of the way of the fire truck. I know, I know the truck you're speaking of. I don't know how big the trailer would be and also to comfortably and safely pull over with, with the Girl Scouts in the back. That's would be one concern, especially if the fire trucks got to go up eastbound to comfortably with parked cars on both sides, get around that. That's something I'd have to talk to the fire company with real quick. Other than that, other than that, you'd be going straight up Main Street, up through Nelsonville, making the right on Peak Skill like we do with the Memorial Day Parade, go past Summit Street, go back to 9D. Now, would you be going directly across to Chestnut Street or you attempting to make the right on 9D back down to St. Mary's?
The right on 9D back down to St. Mary's.
Okay, the reason I ask is depending how big, how big the parade is, 9D is, besides Main Street, 9D is very rough to close it down for a long amount, a long period of time. Again, depending how big the parade is going to be. If you went straight across and went around Chestnut Ridge Apartments and went down that way and then back onto 9D, and then maybe that way, if you could consider that, again, it all depends on. And we're talking 50 people, 100 people, shouldn't be a problem with one float. If it gets any bigger with, you know, I'm hearing about bicycles and stuff like that.
Right.
Little hard to close 9, 9D from Peak Skill Road all the way down to 301 and Main, because that's exactly where you'd want to go into St. Mary's to comfortably be able to maneuver in. So you're talking about blocking that off. A lot of people coming in out of Food Town, a lot of people coming in at the gas station, Dunkin' Donuts.
Gotcha. Do you remember the year we went that way? There was one July 4th parade that.
Started lined up at Chestnut Ridge and went along 9D to Main and down and finished at Dockside.
Oh, got you. It was the opposite. Okay.
One year, the fire, one of the fire department parades started in that direction because a lineup was in the Butterfield parking lot. And that was in 2000, that was in 2006.
I wasn't, I wasn't here for that.
I think, I think we went that way, but because I know we, we were lined up in Butterfield.
I do remember lineup at Chestnut Ridge.
I remember lineup at Chestnut Ridge, Chestnut Ridge too. I remember what year that was though.
So it's, it has been done.
I'm not saying it's not feasible, but it just, my concern will be the amount of people.
Yeah.
That will be the only thing.
It's also, we haven't done it since 4th of July.
Yeah, well, yeah. How long do you think it would, I'm wondering how long 9D would be closed and what kind of backup there would be. 11 o'clock, 11:30 on a Saturday and 4th of July, Saturday, a lot of traffic.
Yeah, especially going from Peak Skill Road down to, into the parking lot of St. Mary's. I don't think, looking at it, I'm just going to suggest, say there's 100 people and you have a float and you have, say, whatever, 25 bicycles or wherever you may be. Some people walking with dogs possibly. Fire truck?
If I, if we're marching.
Okay, if the fire truck's going to be there and fire truck's marching, that's, that's going to be, going to be a little extensive for your time to close it down.
Well, I mean, one option, which is a shorter route, but more manageable, would be to start at the waterfront and come up, turn the corner and go into St. Mary's and cut out Upper Main, Peak Skill and around. It is really bonkers on Saturdays. It's just not what it was in the years that the parade ran.
Right.
From 9D down, down Main. I have the same concern on a July Saturday.
Yeah, since it's being the first year you want to do this and I'm excited for it, believe me, I'm not, I'm not trying to, you know, knock it down or anything like that. I think we start off small. If you want to start down in West, in the water and go up that way and do it that way for the first years as a, as a nice test run and see, see how it runs, I think that's your best bet. And then I'm sure, you know, if it's, if it turns out to be a great event, it's going to get expanded. And then maybe next year go up through Nelsonville and then go that route. Because I also, I also would have to get coverage. I would need at least probably six to seven cold spring officers and possibly the, the React to help you guys out, depending how big it gets.
Gotcha. Okay. Could we start at 11 then?
Oh, because you're dropping a short amount of time, you mean?
Yes, yeah.
I mean, I don't, I don't think the time, yeah, has an impact necessarily, whatever, whatever works. Because yeah, it will be a shorter walk.
I mean, second, Officer Burke, it's, I'm so excited for this. I'm like so thankful of you for doing it. It's just trying to make sure that it's a good success and everyone's safe and all that.
Absolutely. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, so would you like to make a motion regarding the parade?
Um. Nothing else to discuss on it or you need just for the parade?
Yeah.
Sure, so I make a motion to approve a parade on July 1st, a community-led parade, beginning at, beginning at the water and proceeding up Main Street to St. Mary's.
Line up at, line up at West Street at 10?
Well, sorry for the 11.
It's usually an hour before. Line up at 10?
Oh, to line up, to line up an hour before?
Let's step off at 11?
Yes.
Okay. Are you, yes, okay, so I would second that motion with that amount of orientation.
One point, I would squeeze it to lining up about 10:30. This is where I could close down Lower Main and whenever that, I'd close that much depending how big it is with the fire truck. If the fire truck's going to be down there and stuff, I'd rather close it at 10:30 and then kick off at 11.
So would you like to rebut?
Line up at 10:30, kick off at 11. Pardon my motion.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yay. Thank you.
Just for clarity on the public record, so St. Mary's is a private property. So the village doesn't have, doesn't have permitting to do on the St. Mary's lawn. I would encourage you Tara to work with Larry and Putnam React. They've been great at helping with big events at St. Mary's in the past for pedestrian safety, especially getting across Route 9.
Okay.
And I checked with Michelle Ascalillo. You had asked about, you had asked about a donation. The village has traditionally donated to the Veterans Day Parade and the Memorial Day Parade. Those are 501(c)(3)'s. We are able to make contributions to 501(c)(3)'s. This is a private event. So we can't make a direct gift, but we could do a sponsorship. So if there's something that the village could sponsor, we, the amount we gave to the Memorial Day was $250 to that parade.
Okay.
It is both an equivalent amount, maybe that could be something. Can you come back to us with an idea?
Yeah, sure, absolutely.
Awesome.
I'll just send you an email.
Cover on that event?
No, we can, well, whilst we're talking about it, going forward, I'll make sure I can hopefully enough officers to volunteer to do that and we'll keep in touch.
All right, Gray, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. See ya.
Bye.
Just want to also confirm or make known officially that the fireworks are Saturday, the first from 5:30 to 9:30.
As West Point, perfect.
Yes.
Okay. So one more item while we have Larry in the room, so you don't have to sit through all of the other stuff. There is a letter from St. Mary's. It was an addition to, it is an addition to the packet, it's an add-on. Father Lutz has made this request for a procession on Saturday, June 10th from 8 to 8:30. As pastor of Our Lady of Loretto Church, I'm requesting permission to have a procession in honor of Corpus Christi on Saturday evening, June 10th from 8 to 8:30. Procession would exit the front doors of the church on Fair Street, turn left up Main Street, turn left again on Garden Street and re-enter our parking lot on Garden Street. The entire procession will probably only take 15 or 20 minutes. As always, thank you for your consideration and continued community support. God bless, Father Lutz. So this is a, this has happened traditionally at St. Mary's. This is not the first time they're making this request. Sorry? I'm sorry. Pardon me. So I would make a motion to approve this request. Second. All in favor?
Hi.
With Father Lutz first. People safe? I think they stay on the sidewalk, right?
Um, they, depending, again, how big the crowd is, I know it was, they didn't do it last year, did it the year before, I believe?
I remember it a couple of years ago.
My father told me, he said, I think they skipped one year. If it gets to be a large amount than usual, I kind of just take one side of the street, get them up like Fair Street, I would do the east side and just put them that way and then quickly turn. I will be here and I'll have you on video, that one block, one block up Main Street to make the left onto Garden, we'll, we'll take care of it, so it shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you. Okay. Item C is a change order for the Catskill Aqueduct project. I am going to do my best to translate what the engineers have communicated about this change order. If you have additional questions, we can follow up directly with Doug Khan. He was not able to be here tonight. So, so this is the issue. While, while digging, the existing water main for the former emergency connection to the aqueduct was, was opened to remove and it would not drain. The water flow was continuous. They expected it to be cut, drain out what was left in the line and be done, but it did not drain. The water is continuous. With water flowing there, they can't make a connection to the aqueduct without a functional valve in that location so that they can turn the water on or off, obviously. The shut-off valves that exist on Fishkill Road already, which were assumed to be part of the former emergency connection have all been operated. None of them have any effect on the flow, so they don't, they are either out of service or did not ever control that flow. So the proposal is, the source of the water is unknown. So the solution is to install a specialty valve that can be installed under pressure. So the pipe will be full but pressurized, known as an insertion valve. And an insertion valve allows, will allow the team to verify the source of water. If it's not from the DEP site, it's not from the DEP site, West valve location, they'll be able to complete the connection to the aqueduct according to plans and they'll trace the source of water feeding the pipe. They do believe that the likely source is the founder of reservoir. And if that's the case, then we have a connection, an extant connection from the aqueduct to the foundry that is, that is operational, that will carry water already. So that will save some. So we'd be able to feed back through that line to the water treatment plant from the aqueduct through this line under drought or low reservoir condition. So this could serve as the emergency, it's not the permanent connection, the emergency connection that we were going to have to do unfold. So, but further work as investigation is needed and then obviously additional work will need to happen when the dam is being connected. This isn't intended to be the connection, the long-term connection for the dam. This is, so we have emergency connection at play. So the cost, the change order is 36,000, I'm sorry, yes, 36,800 for the insertion valve. The cost is offset by the temporary connection, which would no longer be needed since this is in place. We don't need to add an additional temporary connection.
Just do we know that?
Yep. And it's also offset by the reduction in scope of alternative two. Alternative two was on the aqueduct side itself, there were structures in the ground, valve meter boxes and pipe from previous connection. The DEP originally wanted us to remove all of that pipe through the whole length, which was very expensive. And they agreed to let us leave those pipes in the ground and build them. That they're stable. So that saved $46,000. So the, the costs offset. There are going to be a number of change orders, obviously, as they work in the field and, and, and see conditions that are not necessarily as what was mapped or what was expected. So the request is to approve this change order so that Han can proceed with the insertion valve discussion. I'm sorry, that's the best I can do with that explanation.
So the, this says the change order, the total cost of change is nine.
That's right, balanced against the savings of the temporary connection.
Got it, right. Well, I, they have always been in good communication with us, so good to know, like I'm sure it's, they'll continue to get more information. They will continue to update us quickly, which is a good thing.
It's, it's proceeding well.
Yeah.
Do they have an estimated finish date sometime in the fall? So would someone like to make a motion to approve the change order?
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the change order, insertion valves, emergency interconnection to the Catskill Aqueduct in Village of Cold Spring. In the amount of
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
I just to note for the record that the deduction for alternative one is 27,000, so the overall amount of the change order is 9,882.12. Okay. Okay, the next is also for Larry. He's been waiting for this for a very long time. The county finally has new radios ready. The ongoing tower project is still in action, but this is a memorandum of agreement with the county for radios in our police cars, handheld radios, a new base, programming and better interconnectivity with dispatch. It will be, is much, much needed. So the request is for approval for me, sign the intermunicipal agreement. Under, under the agreement, we are responsible for the cost of programming, which is being done by the, by the county IT department. So it is a, use cost, I think it was 300 for radio.
I think it's a little less than that, right around that, between 200 and 300 for radio.
It's a small amount, not what we expected. And the other note is that we need to register with Motorola so that we are, the village is made aware of any recalls on the product. The county will continue to own them.
Right, we're, we're just signing for new radio.
You walked in at a perfect time.
Oh, that was good.
Yeah. So the county continues to own them, we are given use rights.
Do we have a cost estimate? It's not in the bucket, but we have.
We did in the budget, have a cost estimate and I'm sorry that I forgot to write it down and bring it in with me, but at this, at this point, you own the cost of the program.
And sorry, I, the install of the vehicles.
And install, please.
Which was also in.
Yeah, we don't have that bid yet. This is just the intermunicipal agreement to accept the radios so that we can then contract to have them installed. But the county will program. Discussion, other discussion? Okay.
No, it seems to feed the excitement. I make a motion to approve for the mayor to sign the intermunicipal agreement with Putnam County for the Cold Spring Police Department radio upgrade.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
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 It's all fun, Karen. What was that, yes?
Agreed, yeah, that's what I can't find out what's going on. We want to help out. You know, it was 6:30.
I recommend that Tara have a conversation with you since you've been organizing parades forever. Well, it feels like forever. Or advice that you might offer her. Okay, next.
It was approved, is, yes.
Oh, it is.
Yes, Saturday, the first, lineup at 10:30, step off at 11.
I'll forget.
Uh, yes, it's just going to be from waterfront up Main, St. Mary's. To see how it is with weekend traffic.
Okay.
Awesome. Okay, the next part, Eliza is going to take the lead on the selection of the credit card processor for the parking kiosks.
Yes. So, excuse me, Michelle went out to several different vendors. Basically, the parking kiosks need their own credit card processing. It can't be the same as what we're using through Park Mobile. So Michelle got three different companies to give us estimates. Card Connect, Chase gave us two different estimates and Heartland. In the past, we've used Heartland and we're not terribly happy with it. But Card Connect came in with the best rates. It beat Chase's, which are sort of a flat rate, but it had better rates and it, its contract wasn't as sort of locked down. It's more flexible. So if we're not happy with it, we can always switch over to Chase, whereas some of the other contracts, it gets locked in for like three years. So it was Michelle's recommendation and I agreed that we go with Card Connect. And basically they, they sent us a, Michelle gave us a nice like sheet with estimates and like for a $4 hour parking fee, it would cost us 13 cents. So it's a pretty low fee for a credit card processor and all the others. The Chase options were 20 cents and the Heartland option was 25 cents.
Obviously needs interface with the, with the kiosks.
Right, right. So yeah, that's, that's the gist of it.
Questions? Comments?
So this is a flat, it's a flat fee. These are flat fees per, per unit, right?
Right.
On, like it's, you often see on a, on a parking kiosk that you get these charges tacked on afterwards. It's not like, it's not that, that sort of additional fee that we could directly charge to the user. It's one that's behind the scenes and so we incorporate it into our price.
Right, that's correct. We could, we could adjust our, our user fees to incorporate, to add it, tack it on if we wanted to.
Yeah.
I think generally our fees that we're proposing to go at $4 an hour kind of includes that.
I agree. Well, I would make a motion to select Card Connect as our processor for the parking kiosks.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Thanks, Eliza. And just follow up on, on the kiosks. Eliza has gotten copy of the municipal contract from, I can't remember which municipality, and we've requested a couple of others. The village attorney would like some modifications in the contract kiosks, so we're working on that, getting a draft done on that.
It's not for the kiosks, that's for the enforcement fees.
Sorry, for the enforcement software. Thank you. Okay, the Clearwater would like to come back to do continuing educational tours. They were here for the, for helping sixth grade and a couple of other classes in the spring. It was really fun. Larry's gone now. We went out with them, with, with kids. It's really great. They would like to dock 623 to 625, arriving in the morning on the 23rd and departing on the morning of the 25th. We have traditionally waived docking fees for the Clearwater because of its educational function and the, what is gained by the public, all in here. Any questions or concerns?
No.
Thanks.
I will make a motion to. I will make a motion to approve the docking of the Hudson River Loop, Loop, or Fluke, Clearwater, June twenty-third through June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
And with the waiving of the fees?
Yes, excuse me, and the waiving of the docking fees.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Eliza said I?
Yes, yes.
Okay, next, recommendations for Mayor's Park. Table by graph, recommendation for Mayor's Park, we have three. Two birthday parties by Phillips Town residents. One is the seventeenth of June from eight thirty to twelve thirty. The event coordinator has reviewed these applications and they have been approved by the Rec Commission, recommended by the Rec Commission for us to approve. Birthday party for resident Michael Farkas, six seventeen, from eight thirty to twelve thirty, I would make a motion to approve. Favor?
Hi.
The next is a birthday party in July, July twenty-nine, twelve to five. Phillips Town resident Fernando de Cuna. Anything that you want us to know about that?
Yeah, sure, certificate is there, everything is fine. They do have marked on the application about using a tent, but the tent is only a ten by ten. So it does not have to, it does not have to go for enforcement.
Thank you for double checking. July twenty-ninth, twelve to five.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And the last is a slightly modified application to meet the needs. This is David Marzolo applying on behalf of Phillips Town Cub Scout Pack one thirty-seven to use Mayor's Park and Fields at Pavilion. Rep knows they want Field as well?
Yes, okay.
On June eleventh, twenty twenty-three, from twelve to five, this is for their end of the year Boy Scout event. The Boy Scouts of America had a particular concern about insurance requirements for the village. We ran it past the village attorney. He we have the modified page, Karen? The second one signed by David. Gives it a pile on the people. Okay, give me a second.
Well, I can.
Okay, so this last page with the signature from the Boy Scouts replaces the separate page on the original application with the agreed language between the village attorney and the Boy Scouts and signature from scout executive of Greater Hudson Valley. Yes, this is a correct one, day six seven. I would love to have this event back in the village. I would make a motion to approve it. Favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And I should, you'll keep an eye on the on the Halloween fields for us while there.
I will remind you to act accordingly.
Thank you. And the last is approving the hire of seasonal labor, which we improved in the budget at sixteen dollars an hour for roadways and facilities. At this time, this is from Robert Downey, the county, but this time I'd like to recommend we hire a clean, close, summer help employee. I interviewed him last week and think he worked well for us. He knows how to operate zero-turn riding mower, bobcat, pushmowers, weed whackers, and has good general knowledge of construction as he is currently studying to become a mechanical engineer. He has his own car and is going to start ASAP. Please let me know if you have any questions. I'd like to get him working as soon as possible. Thank you, Robert Downey. I am favor and I would make the motion to, I think. Any questions before we vote? Second from Eliza, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Bring Bugsy up with another set of hands. Okay, next is approval of minutes. Karen was able to make requests of modifications. Thank you, hug, good night. Eliza asked for a couple of questions. Karen was able to make them, so they were reflected in the you have them with you, Karen?
There, there.
Ready, yeah, okay.
There's the one with track changes and then the
Okay.
with that incorporated.
Eliza, were you are you, did you, were you able to see them electronically?
The updated minutes, if they're they're online.
Karen sent them out by email earlier?
Yeah, yeah.
And they, are your changes reflected?
They weren't reflected in what was emailed earlier, but I saw the updates reflected in what I think either Jeff changed or was it Karen?
Karen did, Karen out of five.
Yeah, so.
Got it, okay.
Yeah.
Someone like to make a motion regarding the minutes of May tenth?
Sure, I will make a motion to approve the minutes of May tenth.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Someone like to make a motion regarding the minutes of five sixteen or requested modifications?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes of five sixteen with the modifications.
Second, all in favor?
Hi.
The last set is May twenty-fourth. Any discussion, any request of changes? Okay, motion fee?
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of May twenty-fourth, May twenty-fourth.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
I am, I am abstaining. I was not in attendance for that meeting. Great, for the minutes, someone like to make a motion regarding bills?
I make a motion to approve.
We should point out, sorry, sorry to interrupt you, but this is that time of year when we're closing out one budget cycle and beginning another, so there are two sets of batches, one for the previous year and one for the current year. Hi, Paul?
I approve, I I make a motion to approve bills for FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, batch six nine four nine, an amount of seventy-seven thousand four hundred dollars and eighty-two cents.
Second. Favor?
Hi.
Hi.
And I make a motion to approve bills for FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, that number six nine five zero and the amount of three thousand five hundred thirty-one dollars.
Second. Favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Okay. Now, we'll move on to the public hearing portion of the meeting. Our chapters one thirty-four zoning, seventy-six noise, and one oh four signs. First is to give you an update of what has happened since we were last together in public session on the twenty-fourth. So all of the received public comment and questions have been addressed and drafted. Two batches have been released. More to follow tomorrow morning. Village Attorney okayed one hundred and forty-five of the questions tonight for release, so they'll be on the website tomorrow once we format the document. The planning board comments were received by the trustees and the ad hoc working group. Talk about them tonight. The full chapter of one thirty-four with revision already approved by the trustees and those recommended to the trustees was tweeted and posted. The noise chapter and the signs and placards chapter were revised per comments and recommendation. The EAF, Ted with us? Okay.
I did.
And Jonathan, yeah. The EAF updated, was updated to reflect modification. Negative declaration was drafted for review by the trustees and the public. All of that was sent to and acknowledged by Putnam County Planning Department. And I met with PCNR to reserve space and discuss formatting for the final legal notice required by NICEERTA after the code is adopted. Space reserved for that. Tonight. As I said, there are one hundred and forty-five questions that have been released in the last couple of hours. They'll be up on the website tomorrow. Our consulting planner Ted Fink and our attorney Jonathan DeJoy will talk us through all of the revised documents. We'll have an initial discussion of the three chapters among us. I'd like to discuss the planning board comments and sort of outline for Ted to draft a response with trustees to approve next week. I'd like to read letters, a couple of letters I'd like to read into the record and then we'll do public comment. So Ted? We haven't talked for weeks.
Yes.
Talk us through the documents. All these documents are online. We do have limited paper copies here. A lot of paper that we didn't want to waste, so they're available online. If you would like paper copies, you can request them and we'll provide them for you during business hours. Okay, Ted?
Okay, um, so.
We can see stuff.
Yep, so the work group has been working diligently to try and and be responsive to the comments, the public comments that have come in, some of the preliminary comments that came in from the planning board, and to do its own due diligence on review of the document to make sure everything was accurate, that was internally consistent, and to basically to wordsmith the document in a way where it it makes more sense and I think is is responsive to many of the comments that came in about about issues that were not entirely crystal clear. So what we have now, almost two months have passed since the first draft was released. And what I've done is I prepared three different versions of the same chapter, one thirty-four. One is a a comprehensive red line copy of all of the changes that have been made since the April twelfth version was released, and this shows everything that has been deleted, everything that has been added to the document. And it's, the the unfortunate part of it is it's, it memorializes every change that's been made to the text of the document. But it's not really a readable document. It's very difficult to follow. That's sort of a format when there's a lot of changes that go on. There's lines all over the page that shows you exactly what the change was and it's off on the side and you know, it's it's very confusing for most readers to be able to get through it and make sense of it. So what I did was I prepared a second version, a revisions version of the document. But what it does is it only shows the new text. It doesn't show all of the deletions, and it's actually the deletions that create the biggest confusion.
Documents, Ted?
Pardon?
You want to share your screen?
Um, well, okay, so I I'm getting to that. So that version of the document is the one that I was planning to go through tonight, was the one that chose all of the new text, not the deletions, not what's been taken out, but what's been added to it that actually is is significant from the standpoint of what's been changed that will be in the the document that is now subject to the public hearing process. And so I was hoping to be able to take you through that document and show you exactly what is new in this document. And in doing so, I'll I'll do my best to try and explain how things have changed. In other words, if there were any sections that were taken out as a result of a change in in the the thoughts of the work group and the and the village board in deliberating on on the various aspects of this document. So let me get that document up and so we can then begin the process. All right, let's see. Okay. Can everybody see this okay?
You can pause for just one second, Ted.
Yep.
We can't move this out of its location. If if you can, would like to be able to see better, you're welcome to relocate to another part of the room. If you want to be able to see the documents, what works. Okay, Ted?
Is this large enough to see or?
It is.
If I make it smaller, you can get more of the page, but I don't.
It's good, I think it's, but big is good.
Big is good. Okay, so let's stay with big. All right. So everything that you see here with a little orange line in the left column of the page, that shows that there is something that changed in that particular line. And in this case, I've explained this before, but what happened when the first version went out on April twelfth, there was a there was a problem with a global search and replace that removed virtually everyone within the document. And so I found most of them, but there were a few in here that that weren't. And so you're going to look at this. That's an insertion of one that wasn't in the April twelfth document. So that shows you that there's new text in that particular case. There are also.
You, one of the places where that showed up a lot, and Marie, it was one of the the items that you caught was one oh four was referred to as oh four.
Oh four, exactly.
There is no, obviously, there is no chapter oh four, so that is now corrected.
Yes, and the reason why you're seeing lines here in the left is because over here, I've begun the process of adding page numbers for all of the, not only the sections, but also the subsections. So all of the articles have a page number. The reason why you're not seeing the page numbers here is because this was still a document in the process. And I know when all of the changes are accepted through that revisions functionality that we have in the word processor, it does change the formatting. So I wanted to make sure that the page numbers were in the final version of this document that is the clean document without any of the additions or deletions shown. All right, so that's what you're going to see in there. So you'll see minor little things like this where there was a missing and between medical and health. You're also going to see as we go through one, one of the words that changed was site plan. It was in the April twelfth edition, but all of it was lowercase. But because site plan is defined in the definitions, one of the conventions that we've used is to have all of the words that are defined in in Article Two definitions to be capitalized. And so you're going to see that all of the lowercase site plan has been replaced with capitalized site plan. All right.
Consistent with, I'm just going to keep, it's okay, I pop in periodically, Ted.
Yep, that's fine, please, please, don't hesitate.
The previous large chunk of code updates that were completed in twenty twenty-one, that 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 convention of capitalizing definition. So this is consistent with that work.
Yes. One thing that I discovered, there were two new sections. They were in the April twelfth version two, but they failed to be in the table of contents. So those have been added to the table of contents. All right, you will see that there's general references to other chapters of the village code that have application and some sort of a relationship with the zoning, and so these have been added as general references right up in the front of the document. And then getting into the document itself, the first article has to do with the enumeration of purposes. This is actually almost word for word, a provision that was in the the residential zoning district provisions, and the consensus of the the work group was to, because it really had application for the entire village and not just necessarily the the residential district, was to put this into the enumeration of purposes of the entire zoning. So that is a new addition to to those purposes. Right? And then we get into word usage and definitions, and you can see how work on the the definition for accessory apartment has been amended by new language that clarifies exactly what is meant by an accessory apartment. All right. It it must be the principal domicile, lots record owner of title. It's incidental and subordinate to one family dwelling located on the same lot. And most importantly, it may be located either in the principal building on the lot or an accessory building. Okay? Building, all electric, there's a provision in the PMU district, and that is the the district for the planned unit development on the marathon site. An all-electric building, there are a number of environmental provisions that have been added to that having to do with building building development and how buildings must be all-electric and avoid the use of fossil fuels, oil, natural gas, coal, and so forth. And buildings within the marathon site will have to be all-electric buildings to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. And you can see there's not not changes everywhere. This is something. This is something that I actually discovered today. This is, I've only discovered one error so far in what was posted to the villages website today. And formally, there were, there was two definitions for density, one that had to do with gross density, one that had to do with net density. Both gross and net density, and I apologize for this. They were deleted by accident and the reason why that is significant is because the density of the marathon development, the PMU development is based upon the net density. So that is something that is going to have to be put back into the document. Okay, that was, I missed it before it went out and found it just a short time after it was posted to the village website. So I wanted to make you aware of that. It's the only error that I've found so far in this new document. I wouldn't be surprised if there's a couple of others that we find, but I did want to bring that to your attention. There was some work within the residential district about how driveways are defined and what would be permissible, for instance, making sure that parking is not in the front yard. And in order to accomplish that purpose, we came up with a new definition for driveway. Let's see, this is a very minor thing. You're going to see some minor things here. That was, those were capitalized. That was made lowercase because there's no definition for apartment houses in there. Facade, there was a request to provide a definition for what is the facade of the building? It's the exterior wall of a building because it, it does relate to one of the provisions in the residential district for the front plane of a building. This was a clarification that was requested as a result of public comment. A family daycare home is a new use that's now in the table of uses. And the request was to make sure that it was consistent with New York state law. And so a clause was added here as defined in the New York state child daycare regulations. And then the specific regulation that contains the definition of what constitutes a family daycare home under state law. One of the changes that you'll see when we get to the, to the table of uses is that a filling station was deemed to be a use that would be appropriated to be two districts. So it was important to define what constitutes a filling station. So that has been added.
May I pause for clarity?
Yes.
Moment, we do have a filling station that it is in the B1. That it would be then an existing non-conforming use in B1.
Yes.
But that doesn't mean that it has to go away is the point.
Correct, correct. All non-conforming uses are basically in existence until some trigger is, has been activated by the non-conforming use section. Let's see what else. Home occupation. This was something that there was quite a lot of public comment on. The definition of a home occupation was revised so that it is clearly limited extent incidental and secondary to the use of the dwelling unit for living purposes does not change the residential character of the property or neighborhood or have exterior evidence of such secondary use other than a small nameplate. So that has been inserted to clarify home that home occupations. Let's see, here's an example where you'll see site plan. It's now capitalized. Because it is defined. Oops. School, that was a comment, you know, what do you mean by a school? And of course, schools can have different meanings. So a definition was added to define what a school is, could be a public nonprofit or for-profit entity and it must comply with all applicable New York state education laws. Site plan, that was not defined, even though in the April 12th edition, we had a definition for a special use permit. To make it very clear what a site plan is, this is a definition that is essentially paraphrasing the definition of a site plan in New York state village law. There's also a provision now for accessory apartments to receive expedited site plan review so that it is limited to certain concerns such as the building elevation and design, parking, lighting and signage. So the planning board wouldn't would, would have that, but they would also be able to require more information if it was necessary regarding public health, safety or general welfare. Let's see. I think that's it on the definitions. Establishment of the districts, here's another missing one from the April 12th version. Scenic view shed overlay, it was the SC, C and V, and of course now it's SV, which is correct. Let's see, it's like plan, more site plan stuff. You're going to see a lot of this.
Of course, the site plan section is now accordingly in conformance with village, New York state village law.
That's correct. Yes. Yes, the procedures, the timeframes, the definition, everything is now synced with New York state village law so that that part of the zoning law is up to date. And, and it is consistent. Let's see. Okay, no more changes here. We're going along here and seeing not much in the way of changes until we get to this section. This is subsection E in the residential neighborhood standards. So there were some clarifications here. The first one is in terms of whether existing buildings in the R district that don't conform to the dimensional requirements. They may be continued repaired, structurally altered, reconstructed or enlarged in accordance with 13419G, which are the non-conforming use regulations. So it now makes proper reference to the section of the zoning that deals with any non-conforming buildings. Parking standards, this is the area that I was talking about in terms of the driveway that we were dealing with in the definition of the driveway. So the parking standards here, except in a driveway, parking's not allowed in the front yard or forward to the front plane of the principal structure. And one curb cut permitted for a lot. So that was all new now. What you don't see here, and this is the downside of having only the new text to view. There was a large chunk here that was subsection E4 and those were the form-based standards that were removed. And the reason why they were removed was the, after the April 12th edition of the of the zoning came out with the forum based standards. The historic district review board finalized their village historic district design standards. And those standards actually had many of the elements that were incorporated in the forum based hybrid standards that had been in the earlier version of it. And after reviewing these, the work group decided that it would not be necessary to do that because the most of the villages residential neighborhoods are within the historic district. They're going to be subject to the historic district design standards. And so it was, I think everyone agreed that the forum based standards could be removed. And instead, the historic district review board will continue to review projects within the historic district and issue certificates of appropriateness based upon the historic district design standards. And that pretty much relieves the necessity of having the forum based standards for the residential district.
But let's, let's be clear on this point. So there is no lack of clarity among the public here. The historic district standards apply only in the historic district. The form-based the, the form-based, the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan called for us to look at the possibility to consider form-based zoning. We did. Based on public comment and, and the working groups conversations, we felt it wasn't necessarily a good fit outside the PMU. And in combination, the HDRB's adoptions of its new standard, they adopted them, they accepted them last night. That in combination with the modifications to the dimensional requirements throughout throughout the residential district to more appropriately reflect the built reality on the ground. We felt that with those dimensional adjustments, we achieved the same goal without the clumsiness of the form-based and it really wasn't integrated, it really wasn't integrated well into the text. So as, as requested in the comp plan, we tried it out, we put it before the public, it didn't fly, we pulled it. That affair assessment Ted of those.
Yes, I think so. And I think it's important also to emphasize that New York state village law does require that all zoning changes be in accordance with a comprehensive plan. It doesn't mean that everything that is in the plan that is recommended has to be adopted as part of the zoning. What it means is that if there's going to be changes to the zoning, the comprehensive plan must first have analyzed what those changes are and have made a recommendation that becomes an official village policy that can then be used by this zoning amendment process. So I wanted to make sure that was, that was clear.
Also, I would like to say that this is how public process is supposed to work. Graphs get put forward. The public reviews them, makes comments. The board listens. Makes modifications. That's how good public process works. That's how better final products are made. So this is how it's supposed to be. Go ahead Ted.
Okay, so now we're on the B1 district, again, a missing one here. You can see there were very few changes here, only, well, actually there was a two missing there too, but no real changes here. Now we're in the civic district. So one of the things which I think was raised in the public comments was, you know, the civic uses, there is a variety of different uses within the civic district. And so the clause or similar civic functions were added to any sort of facility such, such as municipal functions. But as well as uses that are conducted for the public good, for instance, by a not-for-profit organization dedicated to the arts, culture, education, recreation, transit or similar functions. Okay, and so this is the biggest section, the planned mixed-use district. Perhaps the ones.
Just, I'm looking up the track changes version. There were also changes to the bulk standards table. For where civic uses Ted?
Yes, there were. And I'll be getting to that. I have the bulk table up and I was going to go over this first, then I was going to go over the table of uses and then the bulk table afterwards.
Thank you.
Okay. So um. You can see the only thing that changed in this first section of the planned mixed-use district was the first intent of the district. So the intent was for, for this to comply with New York state village law for planned unit developments and to be consistent with the villages comprehensive plan. There were many comments that came, not many, but there were a few comments that came in. What happens to all of those lots that are in existence? And it's not unusual for a planned unit development to encompass numerous parcels on an area that has been subject to the kind of interest that has been afforded the marathon site because it's been sitting there for, for years now as a vacant property. We know that there's, there was contamination, that it was a super, super fun site, that there's been remediation that has occurred on the site. But we also know that there was an attempt years ago to try and have some sort of a subdivision of the site. So there are about 22 or 23 very small lots that do exist on that property. And so what was added here was the PUD provisions contained present an opportunity for unified and planned approach to development for all lots in existence within the planned mixed-use district to take advantage of the PUD's flexibility and economies of scale offered to the landowners. And that's really the, the purpose of a PUD is to ensure that there is a, a planned development that occurs where there's, there is flexibility, where there's economies of scale that are not offered by the other standard zoning districts that exist within Cold Spring or any other community that moves forward with planned unit developments. And planned unit developments are fairly common. They've been adopted by many communities in the Hudson Valley. So this is an acknowledgement that there are lots, other lots, other than the, the main lot on the property that are in existence. And this affords the, the owner of those lots to be able to take advantage of that flexibility in the economies of scale. You know, you're going to see little wordsmithing changes here where some words have been changed here and there that don't change really the, the meaning. So here was one where PMU district is located with a New York state scenic area of statewide significance and so forth. Some of these designations by New York state, they only apply partially to the site. So that was added to make it clearer. Let's see. Okay. This is just a, rather than just have HDRB to actually spell out the village architectural historic district review board. Their certificate appropriateness for the multifamily buildings. This is the PMU district multifamily bulk standards. There were some changes that were made to this. First, we discovered that rather than having a minimum of 60 feet and a minimum lot depth of 80 feet and a minimum lot area of 7,500 square feet or a maximum that it should really be a minimum. So that was changed. And what I do want to point out too is that one of the difficulties with doing this revision marks version of the document is that when you get to a table like this, the software does not support changes within the actual table by revision mark. So you'll see there's no column off in the left that shows that there are changes here. So what I've done is I've, I've shown by strike through language here in this graph, not the final graph, the final graph doesn't show the maximums here. It shows 75 feet instead of 80 feet and so forth. And I've highlighted the new text in yellow, the old text in strike through. And that's going to be the same in the table of uses as well as the table of dimensional standards as well. Okay, looks like this was a insertion of six in there. That was a big nothing. Okay. Streetscape requirements, this was, the work group discussed this because this was one of the elements of the forum base code that existed in the residential zoning district. And there was, I think there was a consensus in the work group that there needed to be some better definition for how the streetscapes that would be developed within the, the planned mixed-use district site would be developed. And so first and foremost, they shall be designed as complete streets. Public spaces balance the need of all users, pedestrians, bicyclists, vehicular traffic while providing access to lots and spaces. And so I think that was, you know, complete streets is, is incorporated in several locations within the revised zoning now, because I think the concept, it's been in existence in New York state since 2011 when the complete streets law was passed and, and I believe that it was one of the there's not many laws that are passed unanimously by the New York state legislature, but complete streets was one when it passed. And it does provide the Department of Transportation with a role in assisting communities that are interested in the complete streets concept so that the emphasis is taken away from vehicular traffic and that all users, pedestrians, bicycles and cars are, are well balanced. So this is a, the streetscape provisions that have now been put into the PMU district.
The words clarify though. Previously, as part of the form-based section that was in residential, these streetscape standards sat there.
Yes.
And, and, and rightly, the point was raised, how does this work on existing village streets? And there are complete street programs that work within existing municipalities. However, we felt that in, in light of public comment, that portion, that streetscape portion could fit best at this time into the new construction at the PMU. And the larger question of complete streets and walkability around the village is an appropriate item on the list of comprehensive plan update because it's going to, it's going to take more research and more work to think that through and how it best applies in the larger village.
That's correct. And, and I think if you look at the 2012 comprehensive plan, there was no specific mention of complete streets. It was a very new concept in New York state at that time. In fact, it was, the law was passed in 2011 at the time when the comprehensive plan was, was being finalized for adoption in January of 2012. And so that is something that is is recommended for the next update to the comprehensive plan. And it certainly is something that has been incorporated wherever possible within the zoning. And the concept here is that design conflict between vehicular and pedestrian movement shall be decided in favor of the pedestrian. And I think that is an attempt to try and ensure that the village's streets within the PMU District and eventually throughout the village are safe for pedestrian and bicycle movements to the greatest extent possible. And I think from the standpoint of complete streets, it really does begin with a policy statement in a comprehensive plan. That is the way that complete streets begin to happen is to make it a priority for the community and then to move forward in ways over time as streets are paved and sidewalks are added and and things are maintained or things are improved that little by little over time. But it's a concept that begins with with establishing that that policy that everyone has a right to the street and that streets are social spaces for the community and have importance from that standpoint. Let's see. Where did we go? Okay. So, um, there are two places in this where where we've added some reference to chapter fifty-seven regarding the professional review expenses of consultants that would be hired by the planning board for the review of the PMU District Special Use Permit for the Concept Plan as well as for the preliminary and final site plans. So this was this was added just to remind the planning board that the applicant shall submit to the planning board an application, permanent location fees and escrow deposits for reimbursement of professional review expenses of planning, engineering, legal, and specialized consultants for the review and approval of the special use permit. So that means that you know, the developer has the right to hire their own professionals. But it's also incumbent upon the planning board and any municipality to verify the information that's provided by the developers professional to make sure that it's up to the latest standards. And that and that's a verification process that many communities engage in and your chapter fifty-seven is appropriate for that. So it's been added in that location. It's been added in one other location as well. And I'll get to that in a moment. I've highlighted this because there the planning board and a couple of their comments, they related their concern about the contaminants on the site and they asked essentially for a full remediation of the site before any project gets developed there. If you look at the EPA's latest five-year plan that was that was released right around, it was back in April. I'm not sure of the exact date. But basically that said that. It was what?
Five-year review, not a five-year plan.
No, it was a five-year review. Yes. It's it's the latest in a series of five-year reports that have been developed by the EPA based upon their monitoring of the site, their wells on the site. And what they have said basically is that they believe that any new construction on the site should assess the potential for exposure to site-related contaminants by providing a soil vapor intrusion evaluation prior to any new construction on the site. So that is the determination of the United States Department Environmental Protection Agency. And so that is in the phase project phasing. I think it's also important while we're on this section to also take a look at the way that some of the the concerns about access to this area of the village that includes not only the Marathon site, but also West Point Foundry and so forth. It's very constrained. There there's no question about that. There was a great deal of discussion in the comprehensive plan about that and the local waterfront revitalization strategy. And it still remains a concern of of most village residents to ensure that this is properly planned. And so one of the things which the section on this is all the concept plan and what it has to include as part of the review process by the planning board is it has to include a phasing plan which is it's mandatory. It shall be required as a means to provide transportation, water supply and so forth. Sufficient time to meet in a reasonable achievable manner the needs of proposed residential and non-residential uses and compatibility with existing demand. And you'll see that there is other language later on in this section on the PMU District that also relates to transportation and the need for specific studies that that relate to to this. And this is the transportation studies. And there are two of them. First of all, this is the second reference to chapter fifty-seven, the escrow account. So the transportation studies of proposed comprehensive plan development will be prepared for the applicant by a qualified professional. So it makes it very clear that as part of the concept plan special use permit, the applicant will need to submit a transportation impact study as well as a transportation demand management plan prepared. All right. And they have to be a qualified professional with demonstrated experience in transportation planning, traffic engineering, and engineering or compatible field. The transportation studies shall be subject to peer review by a qualified professional traffic consultant retained by the planning board in accordance with chapter fifty-seven. What that means is the developer has to pay for their own qualified professional to prepare the transportation studies. It also means the developer has to pay a reimbursement to the village for any expenses that it incurs in hiring its own independent traffic consultant to verify the plans that are submitted by the applicant. Okay. So I wanted to make sure that was very clear. That's now it before it was, uh, there were references to this in here. But now it says shall be subject to peer review. So that makes it very clear that if this project goes forward and the concept plan is proposed as an application by the landowner, it's going to be subject to traffic studies and those traffic studies will include the village's own engineer at no expense to village residents. Okay, public engagement. This section was significantly changed. I think not only because of some of the public comments, but also when the work group really looked at it, picked it apart in the April twelfth version. They felt that there were a number of improvements that could be made. So first of all, public engagement. In the content, remember, this is the concept plan development. All right. So it is it must include public involvement by relevant stakeholders. And I'll get to a moment what that means. In the development of the concept plan through ongoing feedback and plan development through the site plan review stage. The planning board will facilitate their involvement and collaboration by seeking comments and recommendations of the proposed concept plan early in the review process. The planning board shall invite the Board of Trustees and the Architectural and Historic District Review Board to submit any comments they may have on the concept plan and to participate in any public meetings scheduled by the planning board on the concept plan development. Here it defines the Architectural Historic District Review Board's role in this. They are to provide comments and recommendations by relying on their historic district design standards and on their regulatory and authority and review responsibilities that they have by chapter sixty-four of the village code. So the next thing says, uh, the board shall discuss with the applicant comments and recommendations received both from the Board of Trustees and the HDRB and shall determine in a written statement whether to adopt, adopt with modifications, or reject each of those comments and recommendations with the supporting recent reasons in such statement. So it it means that the planning board really needs to look hard at the comments of both the village board as well as the HDRB and to make sure that there is a written statement of whether or not they accept those recommendations. If they accept them, but they think that they need to be modified or they may recommend reject some of those comments and recommendations. But if they do, they have to have the supporting reasons in that statement. And it also puts a timeframe on it because any applicant is required to have due process to make sure that the application process proceeds in a smooth manner within a reasonable period of time. And so if the Board of Trustees or the HDRB fails to respond within sixty days, it shall be deemed to have no comments on the proposed concept plan. Okay, so yes.
I think it's important to to point out that this mirrors the seeker process in a way with the planning board acting as lead agency and engaging with what under seeker we call interested and involved agencies. It's that kind of role that the planning board is playing. They're not left to free float and wonder how to apply apply this code, right? There's a struck. There's a structure. And we'll also have available to them on on a complex application, the capacity for planning consulting, professional consulting as well.
That's absolutely correct. And I think it's important to to just take a little sidebar here, which is that for the concept plan special use permit, the planning board, it it is something that will need to be classified as a type-one action. It will be subject to the environmental impact statement procedures. And one of the one of the roles of the environmental impact statement procedures is to have a formalized public comment period on a draft environmental impact statement. And there are actually five steps that are involved in the environmental impact statement process. First, scoping exactly what's in the environmental impact statement to be studied. Then there is a a draft environmental impact statement, a final environmental impact statement. And there is also a a written finding statement that has to occur. That's the first step in the secret process. And then if there are any changes or if there's a passage of time that goes beyond a reasonable extent for the site plan review and approval process, that would also have to be subject to the lens of the seeker review of environmental impacts. So there are a number of of sort of safety measures that are built into this, not only through the provisions of this PMU District and and PUD process, but also how they integrate with the seeker review process. And there is a section. Let's see, and I think it is, no, it's I'm sorry, it's further down. So I'll get into that in a moment. The the seeker review process. So continuing with the public engagement, additional outreach to stakeholders shall include encouraging participation. And that's really all that can be done is to encourage participation by neighbors, including the adjoining residential property owners and the owners of West Point Foundry Preserve. And I Kathleen, I think you're going to be talking about a a letter that came in from Cina Hudson on the zoning and they have asked to be specifically made a, you know, not a party, but to have a voice because they're the owners of very large parcel. And the only way to get to their West Point Foundry Preserve is to drive right by Marathon. So they would like to be one of the stakeholders that's added. So the owners of the West Point Foundry Preserve were were added to this. Other ones that were already in there was Haldane, Fire and Police, Water and Sewer, other agencies that are responsible for issuing approvals for the proposed development. And of course, the seeker regulations themselves have a provision in there for all agencies that conduct seeker have a responsibility to help the lead agency to get through the process and to understand the the concerns and the jurisdiction of the other agencies that are involved. So that is is part of the secret process already. And so it's already been integrated into the PMU planning process for the concept plan development.
Ted?
Yes.
I just want to clarify. The Campbell Avenue entrance to the West Point Foundry Preserve is one of three entrances to the Foundry West Point Foundry. One can walk from the train station or walk into the preserve from Chestnut Street. In the upper part of the village by Food Town. So Campbell Avenue is the only car accessible way.
Vehicle, correct.
Ways to get in otherwise. Or total.
Yep. Okay. Um. Let's see, this is seeker. It shall be classified as a seeker type-one action. Let's see. And then standards for the special use permit. So I think there's I'm, I think some of the comments that were made on the zoning. The standards for the special use permit approval. There's nineteen different ones and these are the each one of these are the standards that the planning board must use. And it must ensure that each one has been checked off by the planning board as being something that has been included in the concept plan development process. So every one of these things that you see A, B, C, D, and so forth are standards that must be met before the planning board can approve a concept plan for the for the site. These are all all been in here already. There have been minor little tweaks here and there. There have been some changes here that you can see mass scale and streetscapes were added to this standard that the concept plan must be based on traditional forms of development. These are areas that are now addressed in the HDRB's Historic District Design Standards. So they were added to this. The standards recognize the need to respect and reinforce the village's historic heritage. And such standards require the planning board consideration and and the historic district. I think it's important also to to answer one of the planning board's comments, which is that I think they were unclear as to whether or not the PMU District is within the local historic district and it is within the local historic district. So anything that gets approved there is has got to be put through the lens of those historic district design standards. And there is a whole new section of these standards that apply to new construction within the district. Okay, this is where we get into some of the revisions that were made to the energy conservation code requirements. First, this provision has been has added some language that the proposed buildings and concept plan layout shall exceed all requirements of the New York State Energy Conservation Code. All buildings shall be all-electric buildings. Okay, prohibition on fossil fuel combustion equipment shall be in perpetuity. Buildings shall comply with the requirements in the final in the following table. And these are the energy efficiency standards, the home energy rating system, certification by Passive House. So the requirements are for all-electric with on-roof solar. And then there is another provision here that applies for buildings other than passive houses. It just explains all of this and how you get to that level. This is a fairly rigorous process that buildings will have to be put through to make sure that they're environmentally sound and that they have a a small to negligible impact on greenhouse gas emissions.
And again, this is only within the PMU.
Correct. It's only within the PMU. Yes. Okay, we're seeing a lot here. Okay, um, there was a need for having some revisions made to what happens if the project plans occur over a period of years and there are different phases of development. And let's say market conditions change. This was a provision that needed to have some wordsmithing done to it. And so that has been done. I won't get into it. It's a little bit complicated at this point, but I think hopefully this is going to satisfy both the work group as well as the the persons that commented on it that this is much a clearer in its language. Lots of site plans. Let's see. Okay, so this was a addition to it. So cottage courts. It's a unique form of development. All right. You can see what it looks like. This is something in Shoreline, Washington. They're very popular in the Pacific Northwest. It is a kind of development that was recommended in the comprehensive plan. It's something that's been recommended by those advocates for what's called missing middle housing, which is exactly the kind of housing that Cold Spring already has. which is exactly the kind of housing that Cold Spring already has. Um, and it's it's a variety of different house types. It's single family, it's two family, it's multifamily, which is what you have um throughout the village. It is a new housing option. Um, there are none that that uh we know of within the village, but yet it is one that is in demand in many communities, and it is the kind of housing development that is growing, especially as the population ages, because it's popular with seniors. Uh, it involves very small homes up to a thousand square feet. It has homes that are clustered so that there is a little neighborhood that develops around a nice landscape uh central common area. And one of the things which one of the um uh, one of the provisions that it had in here was if they involve a subdivision of land. And of course, the way that um the bulk requirements have been developed for the cottage courts, it's a very tight um um development. And so a provision was added um that to make it clear to the planning board that the planning board may approve lots within the cottage court in accordance with um New York State uh Village Law Section seven dash seven thirty eight, which is the clustering provision. And that allows the planning board to be able to modify any dimensional standards that would apply to the subdivided lots if it was to be a subdivision um for the cottage courts. Here's just another picture of what they look like. Uh, let's see, I don't think there were any other changes in this section. Parks and Recreation, there were some corrections that were needed to uh the Parks and Recreation District and the specific lots that uh are covered within that, uh, so you'll see that here. Okay, uh, you'll see this a little bit later when we get into the um uh dimensional standards. Uh, the um the limit on building height um in the uh in the P and R, our P R district is fifteen feet, one story. Um, the maximum permitted building coverage is twenty five percent. I don't believe there were any changes in scenic view should overlay district. Other than the site plan, same thing with medical and healthcare. It's all a site plan references are not capitalized. Same thing here. Let's see. Okay, I don't think there was anything there. Um, the next is the, this is the special use permit section. So this is now the section that is in compliance uh and is consistent with New York State Village Law requirements uh for special use permits. Uh, there was not much change here. And this is all basically the process of reviewing and approving special use permits. Let's see. Then we're gonna get into some real changes here. Lots and lots of site plans. Okay, um, so that was site plan and special use permit. There were very few uh changes there, it was primarily just the site plans. Um, this is section seventeen, this is the supplementary regulations, this applies to all districts. Uh, there were a number of changes in here uh which I'll get to. Um, subsection C and subsection D, um, there was a repetition here between these two subsections. C was put on reserve, um, and the reason for that is because uh there is a lot of references throughout this document to um to section, um, you know, one thirty four seventeen. Every one of those would have had to been changed. There's references in the table of uses, there's references in the table of dimensional regulations. Uh, so rather than do that, we just put in a reserve there in the event that the amendments, um, there are future amendments to the zoning, it's always a section that can be um added. So unroof structures, there was um, there was a need for clarification here. Um, and so this is unroof structures needed for access. Um, and these are things uh having to do with uh walkways, steps needed for passage up or down a slope, bridges needed for passage over gullies, driveways and so forth. So it's a clarification um of uh unroof structures and um and where they can be built, how they, you know, what's their highest point and so forth. So that was clarified. Um, this was a front setback um for um basically protecting the streetscapes uh that exist within the village. Uh, and when you have two or more existing dwellings located within two hundred feet on each side of a proposed dwelling, um, on the same side of the street, within the same block, same district, it shall have a front setback not less than ninety percent and no more than a hundred and ten percent of the average setback of all existing dwellings so located. Um, and so this was to recognize that um you didn't, you know, if you wanted to do something with your property and you didn't meet that setback that you had a um uh, you know, an area within which um you could um still have and maintain that setback legally. Accessory apartments, so owner occupancy was one that um uh generated some some comment. I think the work group felt that it needed to be um uh wordsmithed. And so there was a a number of changes that were made in this section. Um, so the first one is to make it clear that uh the lot where the accessory apartment is to be located must be occupied by the lots record owner of title. Um, they have to provide evidence that they're the owner, and this is uh to prevent uh, you know, absentee landlords. Um, and the owner of the lot uh has to occupy either the one family dwelling or the accessory building. Um, and the certificate of occupancy has to prominently display um that it's only valid if the accessory apartment is located in the principal domicile uh with the record owner present. Okay, um, so that clarifies something which um was uh in need of of uh some word changes. Um, this is um relating to home occupations. Uh, and only one is permitted with an accessory apartment uh unless a special use permit from the planning board has been reviewed and approved. So if someone wanted to have two accessory uh or two home occupations within an accessory apartment, they would have to seek a uh special use permit to ensure that uh the site is not being um overly used for residential to maintain peace and good order in the residential districts. Um, home occupations, there's a few changes here. They have to be compatible with the residential character, not only of the neighborhoods, but of the property and the neighborhoods in which they're located. Um, let's see, there were some other changes here. Um, shall not read, the home occupation shall not require internal or external alteration uh or invoke construction features not customarily found in a dwelling. Um, they have to be limited, clearly limited in extent. Uh, they shall have no exterior storage, other than that which is normally associated with a residential use. No on premises sale of goods shall be permitted. Uh, and that's to prevent a retail operation from being come becoming established within a home occupation. Uh, but to provide some uh reasonable um assistance um to also be part of the home occupation. Um, yeah, so you could have somebody coming coming into your office and, you know, help out in office duties if you have an office uh in home. Uh, let's see, this has to do with off-street parking and loading. Um, the idea here was to prohibit yard storage in the front of houses um to um to allow for outdoor storage um in the rear of the dwelling lots. Um, but to make sure that the storage wasn't right up against your neighbor uh so that it respects um reasonable setbacks from the side and rear property lines. Um, uh, and also is respectful of uh the number of of trailers and so forth that um uh can be uh stored such as boat trailer, motorhome or or um or others.
Ted?
Yes.
Just to be clear, yeah, there, well, you you came to it at the end, to be clear that we were talking about storage of vehicles like that. There was, there was other public comment, I want to pull this out for conversation. There was other public comment related to um manufactured housing, mobile homes. Um, the existing code on the books prohibits them. Um, it was, it is not intended to remove it. However, the village attorney has concerns about um exclusionary zoning um and has asked us to take that element and review it as part of a larger comp plan process. So the intention is not was not to um take away that prohibition, but he advised, he advised, he advises us to do it as part of a comprehensive discussion on affordable housing. So we're not in public comment period right now. Go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, I think it's important to also understand there was some uh new laws that were passed in New York State in twenty fifteen. Um, and also the villages um zoning where references mobile homes. That's a term that's no longer used, it's now manufactured housing. And um and uh New York, like many other states, does recognize uh that there are some reasonable um accommodations that can be made for this, but this is something that does need to be uh studied further. Um, so. Let's see. This is the table of parking requirements, there were some changes that were made to this table. Um, uh, library and theater were clumped together, um, they've now been separated. So there are um minimum and maximum space requirements that are based upon standards that have been in use in other locations. Uh, let's see. Orsmen, I think we've gone through the major sections of the chapter one thirty four. Um, I don't believe there's much here in the way of any other amendments. Yep, and these are the two sections that were in the April twelfth, they simply weren't in the table of contents. All right. So, um, let me go now, what I'm gonna have to do, I believe, I have to, I have these up on tabs, but I have to stop my share and then go back to sharing um the table of uses. I'm gonna do that now. Okay, so this is the revised um table six A, this is the table of uses permitted by district. Um, what we've done is we've coordinated the colors um with the colors that are used in the zoning map so that each of the districts um in the proposed uh amendments now is consistent with the zoning district map. Anything that you see in yellow is a change from the um April twelfth um version of this. And you can see there were in the B one district, uh, there was a note that was added here, note number one. Um, the B two district, uh, now the multifamily dwellings are permitted in the B two district. Um, home occupation class one and class two, that has been um eliminated in favor of simply one uh type of um office or or occupation that could be conducted within a residence. Uh, home professional office, the work group felt that there wasn't any real difference between what a home professional office uh could entail versus a home occupation. So that was also um proposed for elimination, that was the recommendation. Um, so you can see those have been taken out, uh, home occupation across the board in any district where it's permitted, and it's in the residential districts, uh, it requires site plan approval. Um, let's see, there were other uses here that there were changes made. Um, I believe a bank was permitted in the previous one and the uh bar now requires um site plan approval. Funeral home, um, in the first edition, uh, this was a last minute thing um that was done before the April twelfth version came out. Funeral home was actually in the list, but there were no uh, no districts where it was permitted. And so the work group uh worked diligently to try and find what were the most appropriate districts to put it in, and that's the R L, the R N uh and the B two.
And these are, for clarity, these are all recommendations by the group that the approval sits with the Board of Trustees. You are presenting us the recommendations that this body will consider.
Correct, correct. Uh, let's see, I believe that um some of these um were changes that would uh relate to this note. And I'll get to that in a moment. Farmer's Market um in uh all districts except for the C, the civic district, it's permitted there, but all the other districts where farmer's market uh could be established. Uh, it was uh recommended for the work group to uh have these as uh required by a special use permit. Um, site plan approval for a house of worship in the two residential districts, the R L and the R N. Um, I believe this is in the B two, okay? Uh, there was a recommendation for um visitor center to allow them in the three sort of of civic um versus general uh use um districts by special use permit. Uh, let's see, I believe there were some changes that were made to the special conditions that would apply to the table of uses. Um, conversion of a first floor commercial professional retail space to residential use, and the B one district is prohibited, so that simply makes it clear um the B one district is in addition to that, that um, and then um this was a um a deletion here, which is shown up in this, and this was moved to down here to twelve, so that would apply to um the B one district that it shall not be reduced during any renovation or change of use or change from residential to commercial professional or retail use.
Ted, could you go back up to um please to visitor center and the and the zones that it's identified in?
Yes, the visitor center right here, and that is in the three civic districts, the Parks and Recreation Civic and Educational Religious and Cultural District.
So that that's a, that's a point to look at, the visitor center we have currently is is in the B one. Oh, oh, no, that parcel is civic, that parcel is civic. We should check that.
Okay.
To make sure, because I know we had, I know that there was conversation about it, I just don't know where it landed, I don't know where it ended.
Okay, um, most of the insertions here of new text um with the special conditions that apply to uh each of the uses by district, um, simply um there was an addition to clarify exactly what district um the special condition applied to. It was sort of a cross-reference with the numbers that are up on here, some of these numbers are hard to see, especially if uh, you know, it's one thing on a big screen, it's another thing in a smaller piece of paper to see the little numbers there. So that just makes it clear what district applies uh, um, this condition applies to. Okay, so, um. New multifamily buildings in the R L sub-district are prohibited, except for conversions from a one family or two family to a multifamily. So that was a new condition that was added. Um, and then the other one was home occupations, it now has a reference to the section that we went through a few minutes ago, uh, they're subject to the rules in subsection seventeen J. Okay, so that is that, let me move on to the dimensional table. So there were um some changes that were made to this, uh, this shows that this is the uh dimensional table that was presented to the village today. Um, there was a change here in the height of an accessory structure in the R O district. Uh, I believe that the older one was eighteen feet, it's now consistent fifteen feet um within the three sub-districts, the R O, R N, and R L district. Um, that one and a half stories is also the maximum permissible height. That one and a half stories is also the maximum permissible height of an accessory structure within those three zones. In the residential large lots district, the RL. There was a comment that these are very large homes, many of which are already three story. You know, why don't you allow three stories? So that was added to that, the maximum dimension. This was a section that was, for the most part, blank in the April twelfth addition. There was some dimensional standards that were added for the educational, religious, and cultural district. Four thousand square feet. The various dimensions such as lot shape, lot width, lot depth, and so forth. These have now been added so that they're similar to the RO district standards. And they were within the parks and recreation and the civic uses district. Two dimensional standards added for a maximum height of fifteen feet. And a building percent of lot coverage of twenty five percent. So you can see it's consistent with most of the rest of the village. So I think that's. That is pretty much it on the changes that were uploaded to the villages webpage today devoted to the zoning chapter. The other thing that was uploaded today is the environmental assessment form that has been revised now to. To recognize the changes that have been made to this new version of chapter one thirty four. So those are now consistent. There is a a date of the most recent revisions that have been made to the environmental assessment form. And so that's up and is ready for review and and common as part of this common period process. So I think that's.
The Board of Trustees tab. Under the topic headings under Boards of Board of Trustees. Before we shift into talking about the planning board. Are there, is there particular, particular questions or feedback for Ted on one thirty four? It's obviously, it's eight twenty now, so one, one oh four and seventy six. If we talk about next week. And not open new topics this evening. But is there any further discussion that trustees want to have tonight about one thirty four? Do you want to sit with it? Talk about it more next week? And everyone needs to obviously review the doc, all the documents as a whole. I could use to fit a little bit. I mean, I don't have specific questions at the moment. Yeah. For Ted. Okay. So thank you, Ted. That was. Extremely comprehensive. Do our Liz, are you on meeting?
I I am, you know, that was a lot to take in. I think it was in addressed a lot of the issues that were brought up. So I'm really happy to see that. And I wanted to just take a little more time to look at it more carefully. And discuss it further next month or next week.
Sounds good. I would like to have a look at the at the planning board comments. Do you have them to screen share Ted or?
Okay, I have two areas where I have questions, but I'm happy to also, one relates a bit to planning boards questions. So, okay, so I'll ask them. So one was about the, about the, and just also to say, it's like a. Huge thank you to you and the committee. It was like a massive amount of work, especially in last, the last week or two. So almost about the, the, you know, you had highlighted contamination and then talked about the five year review. And. My question is because. What I see is the word mitigation and there was the word evaluation. And so maybe that's also something to look at. But I think we should make sure that we're mirroring correctly. What are the requirements during the five year review?
For the.
Big entries in barrier. And it may be because of the sequencing, right? So that's about, so this mitigation is part of new building construction. And I know that the placement that you have Ted is in the very early planning stages. And so. It might be appropriate to say evaluation where you have it, but then maybe we want to say again somewhere really clearly that. The final approval must, you know, must have construction that complies with the EPA. Something like that.
Yeah, okay.
And and maybe one other. Well, these are questions that relate to the planning board. So do you want to talk through that first? I think we should. Yeah, but then I'll also that because it's some kind of what's possible questions and response to the planning board.
And this, I believe Karen has prepared, has printed this document. People in the room would like to look at it on paper rather than on screen. Okay. So Ted, my suggestion is that we actually go section by section. In this document, a lot of what the planning board has raised has already been addressed. Are you with us still?
Yes, I am. Yep. No, I'm listening.
So.
Can you see, can you see the the planning board comments?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So rather than reading into the record, the whole letter, which is available for the public, I'd like to address sections. Can you, what portions, where do your questions fit into the scheme of their document?
Or is it an overall? Well, the one is again around the. Remediation question. One is around. Somewhere around traffic. Evaluation, that kind of question of the criteria for evaluating approval.
So they had sort of high level comments about. The rezoning of the marathon site as PMU. They are advocating for leaving it as an industrial. Zone with a. A PMU overlay. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna read those paragraphs so that we have a sense of what we're talking about. And then I'd like to come to. How we feel about that. So based on the comp plan vision and goals, it seems clear that any proposed rezoning should consider environmental concerns and ensure safe and efficient public asset. Access across the village. If access and environmental issues can't be fully solved or understood, then a rezoning should not proceed. If we're trying to maintain an historic residential character in an area that has been historically industrial. We should consider how to impact the industrial area without changing the character of the adjacent parts of the village. I think that's the goal of PMU. The need to tailor make zoning and planning board procedures that guide the development of the last large parcel of land in the village should be avoided. And and my response to this was why? That's exactly why we should be. Paying very close attention and. And and planning for. Providing, providing strict procedure, because it is, it's a remaining resource. It's sort of the exact, in my mind, it's the exact opposite idea. We absolutely should be developing specific zoning for this partial. It's a unique property. And it has unique impacts on the rest of the village.
And it gives the. Village Board a stronger hand in in shaping.
The planning board. Well, we we shape it now. As part of the legislation, the planning board shapes it going forward in its review. So the implications of tailoring a zoning code and planning board approval procedures to a proposed development is not advisable. Insofar as it might add inconsistencies and the need for variances rather than the actual intent, which is to reduce inconsistencies. I don't think I quite understand that. Rezoning and mixed use could be achieved under the current code. It is possible with the existing I one. That we can add a PMU overlay available by special use permit if the gating issue of environmental and access have been satisfactorily addressed. This would avoid conflict and costly concept planning, because the code can require a developer to address those issues as a prerequisite. Further, this could also serve to achieve the same end without creating additional non-conformity to an already developed village. So I think that there's sort of a fundamental misunderstanding here about how PMU overlays work. Floating districts, and we've addressed this also in the in the response document, floating districts. Have to be drawn down by a developer. So this kind of scenario, floating districts are normally used in larger areas that have multiple. Zones. Identified in the same way, multiple mixed use. And the PMU is an available option that the developer. Decides they'd like to pull it down and take advantage of the flexibility of the PMU. So if this site were to stay I one and a floating overlay be in place, a floating, a floating zone be in place. It would be optional for the developer to pull it down. So the developer could say, yeah, I'd like to pull down this more complex. And and more stringent requirement of a PMU. I'm willing to do that. Or they could say, you know, screw it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna develop as I want. And I think that's where, that's where we started in a comprehensive planning process with being, how do we address a a. A use that is no longer, that no longer serves the village. And how do we make sure that when it, when that site is reused, it's reused in accordance? That's the whole purpose of setting up. A PMU. Ted, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, I, I, yeah, I mean, I, I think that. The whole concept, going back to the comprehensive plan, was that this was an opportunity to ensure that whatever development occurred. On the marathon site, given its location, its importance to the village. That it be done in a way where it it appears as if it grows organically out of the. Things of neighborhoods that the village already has. And I think that was one of the overriding goals of the work group was to try and come up with. A solution that would would prescribe the kinds of procedures that would be most likely to result. In a development that would meet the needs of the village and to do so in a way where it. It respected the existing and traditional character of the village as a, as a walkable. Community with with buildings that were properly scaled, with buildings that. You know, paid attention to the kind of of history that Cold Spring possesses. And I think that. You know, it, I think the the three step process. Was, I think there was general agreement that that was perhaps the the most appropriate way to ensure that. There would be a a robust public engagement process that. Could help to improve whatever development plans are formulated for that site. And that they do so in a way where their environmental are responsible, both to the contamination that exists on the, on the site. As well as to the environmental issues that exist in the, in the bigger picture. You know, outside of the village, such as walkability and, you know, reducing vehicle travel and. Having a a community there that can take advantage of its proximity to, to the train station, to places like the West Point Foundry. And the natural beauty of of Cold Spring. So. I think that's it.
Any general response to that recommendation from the planning board? To retain I one and apply a floating district?
Well, yeah, I, I think the idea here was to be true to the comprehensive plan, which specifically recommended that. Industry go out of existence, that there's no need for industry in Cold Spring any longer. We don't need big box stores. And, you know, do we really need?
Say that one more time. Frankly, if you say big box one more time. We have a friend, a franchise. Business law, right? So when we say, when you're saying big box, outside of the village, that means like a Home Depot. Within the village, a franchise like Home Depot can't be established. What could be established on the I one site? Is, for example, a Danes lumber or a locally owned, you could, you could have that kind of, not a franchise. But you could have lumber sales, you could have concrete sales, you could have under the, under the currently existing. I one, not Home Depots, not franchises, but you could have large businesses and manufacturing under I one. We know we can't have a Home Depot, so let's not go down that path again, please.
No, no, big boxes don't have to be nationwide franchise operations. They can be locally owned businesses as well. And I think. Yeah, no, I think there's a lot of misunderstanding about that, but building, building products and lumber yards are permissible. And they're big box kind of of operations. And you could have a research in an office. Building on the site. You could have a school on the site. You know, there's, there's a variety of different things that are permissible in the I one district. Is that something that you want in that part of the village? Or do you want to allow the village to grow organically and in a way that. It it pays respect to not only the traditions of the village, but also introduces new concepts such as environmentally responsible. Walkability and. Solar and electrification and everything else. And I think.
For the possibility for mixed use that is compatible with surrounding residential areas.
Limited mixed use.
Right, limited.
Yes, I think it's important to to understand it. It was very much limited to a maximum of ten percent of the site. So that was, that was clear from the comprehensive plan, that whatever non-residential that could be developed there would be limited. And I think the comprehensive plan cited three different things, retail, personal services, and office.
We started this with the purpose to rezone it away from industrial, from the comprehensive plan and. You know, I have a lot of concern about the idea of an optional relay district that. You know, that give a much less control to the village about the kinds of. Ultimate and then says there.
Further discussion on that point. You can also come back to this next week if you want to sit with it. So the planning board had a number of key recommendations. A lot of these are already addressed. Any rezoning of the marathon site should require full remediation prior to any development. Obviously, full remediation is not determined by the village. It's determined by the EPA and the DEC and the PMU. It's very clear. That environmental mitigation has to happen before redevelopment and determinations of safety on the site have to be made from the very beginning.
Can I ask a question about that? So my understanding is that we need to follow what the EPA, the, the assessment by the EPA. And the sort of. Requirements that they have prior to development. But I guess a question that may be for Jonathan is, is it? Is it possible for the village to set out additional conditions or or is it? That, you know, what, what is set up by the EPA is what governs the remediation process?
Um, I think you probably could set out additional conditions so long as they're not inconsistent with what the DEC or the EPA. Has set forth. I think they're pretty much always going to be more comprehensive than any local. Restrictions or requirements.
The EPA is usually more comprehensive.
Right.
And how would a, if, if the village were to apply additional environmental measures by its. That would be of its own measure, what capacity? Would the village have to enforce in that regard, right? We're not, we're not the EPA, we're not the DEC. What tools would the village have? To try to layer on additional local level remediation?
Right, that you, that's a good point. You know, you, no regulation is effective unless it has teeth in some way to enforce it. And I think in trying to craft any additional conditions, you would really have to look at that and see if they could be enforced. Then without doing more research, it's not something I could say off the top of my head, you know, how the village could do that.
Pretty heavy lift without content expertise that the.
Yeah.
EPA have.
Any rezoning of the marathon site should require a traffic and road access study with solutions. That was there from the first draft. Maintain the I one and the PMU. We've covered already. Revisit. I don't, I don't quite understand this statement. Revisit the proposed zoning tape maps and tables. For example, forty four percent of R one lots do not meet the criteria. Limiting multifamily to one building with a max of four units would move all existing multifamilies out of conforming, including the Butterfield Mix Use Department Building. Under, currently under construction and without a certificate of occupancy in place. I don't see, I don't see that that's accurate, accurate. First, A, the text has been adjusted, but. I don't see, I don't see that that's accurate, accurate, the tech, first, A, the text has been adjusted, but. Our existing multifamilies are. Pre-existing non-conforming. Right? If the standards modify for MF, those buildings don't lose their certificate of occupancy.
Yeah, uh, just to, to a point of clarification is that that maximum of four units per building only would apply within the PMU district.
Yeah. That, it's just, it's just a fundamental misunderstanding.
Yeah.
Okay, um. Move away from form-based zoning because it contradicts the intent of keeping the character of the village, we addressed that, it has been modified. Um. Add a flood overlay district to allow properties near the shore to survive in the changing environment. That seems as if we, we had discussion about, um. Heights, um, and the idea that the, that waterfront, that waterfront development. And protections is another thing that should fall on a comprehensive plan update, that's, that's bigger than adding into the zoning right at this stage. Are we all, do we all agree that?
I agree.
I'm gonna jump down to the zoning. To open questions for the ad hoc group, um, and Ted. Help us with these. What are the major, well, you've just addressed all of them, actually, what are the major changes being made? Delete streets, get standards, landscape standards, are we moving away from form-based code, why or why not? We just went through all of that. Um. Regarding maximum density of the site, I assume that they mean the PMU here. Hey, they said page two C is inconsistent with code, the provisions contained in the section shall govern and prevail. Does this mean that this will allow for greater density than the village code? Do you understand what they're asking there, Ted?
Um. No.
Do we need to ask for clarification on what they're asking?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I mean, if it. If it is, um. The PMU district, um, it, it's pretty clear that it doesn't allow for greater density than, um, uh, a large part of the village. It's seven dwelling units per net acre, that's the maximum density. Um, it's a pretty clear provision that's in the density provisions of the PMU district. Um, and that was what the build-out analysis was based upon.
Okay. Um, and then the next references page three D one quote, multifamily buildings shall be consistent with the overall character of the village and resemble single-family buildings as shown. In the photograph of a fourplex building, is this? Cookie cutter building the standard or an example? I think the answer is it's an example, yeah?
Those resemble. Those are, they must look exactly like.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure it's really an example as much as it's an illustration of, of, you know, it's just a graphic, um.
Maybe there is a text modification that can make that clearer.
Yeah, okay.
Um. Five, I don't know, five page fifteen item two. To encourage flexibility on the design form. And type intended by this section, if the PMU project plans occur over a period of years, how many years? The development may authorize a departure from the density or intensity of use established for the entire project for each. Phase to be developed, is this at odds with the prior stipulation from page twelve item K? The proposed development is properly phased, so that the density of any phase when combined with previously constructed phases does not exceed. The approved overall density, et cetera. Two A and two B make sure the density and concentration is lower than a prior phase. But the language at the beginning should indicate that rather than, should indicate that rather than saying a departure in density or intensity, it should say something like a reduction in intensity.
And that has been addressed.
I thought that it had, okay.
Yep, that was the section that I went over and I said it's complicated, um, but it, it, a lot of attention was paid to that section to make sure that it was clear.
That's been modified and with the planning board can review the new text and so they have asked for. Um, they have asked for written response to this, so. It would be. At you, there, there are multiple things on our plate in the coming weeks. Um, in terms of final report. Um. PBMR, which is the, uh, energy efficiency. Study, et cetera. Ted, do you feel that you have the capacity to draft a response, or is that something that you need help? Drafting for the trustees to review a draft to the, or response to the planning board?
I can, I can certainly do the first draft of it, but I, I would certainly appreciate, um, input by the trustees, by the work group and, and. You know, make sure it's a joint document that reflects the. Uh, opinions that, um, the trustees have as well as, uh, to make sure that everybody is on the same page that. Were responding, um, properly and accurately.
The reason I'm asking for you to draft is that I know that the, um. The section references will be correct.
Yeah.
Sure, but we'll be sure that that's consistent.
Yep.
Okay. Um, most of the rest we've already addressed, Green Street. Principles, innovative low impact techniques, previous service. Does one set of standards take precedent if historic district standards do not allow for particular green, low-impact innovative materials or techniques? That portion, that portion, I believe of the form base was pulled, right?
That was kind of, that, yes, it was pulled, but there's also, um, there's a lot of, um, green standards in the PMU district, and I think it's important to note that. In the revised, um, uh, historic district design standards, there's a whole section devoted to how to, um, be able to, uh, integrate, uh, new. Um, uh, you know, low-impact and, and sort of green standards with historic districts.
Regarding HTRB review, is the currently industrial zone also in the historic district? Yes. Conceptually, the situation is interesting when we're trying to achieve, um, an historic residential character in an area that has been historically industrial, what is historic? Well, I don't know, do we want to go back to having a battery factory? Uh, on the site, I mean, that's, that's, that's the question is what, that's why you, that's why you zone is to think about what you want it to be. Um, and. It's clear in the comprehensive plan that a move away from industrial is what's being recommended. Thoughts, Pete?
I mean. I guess it's more of a comment, I just don't understand. I don't understand. What the, they're driving at in this, in this question or comment.
I, um, so there was an edit, a proposed edit to the, to one thirty-four to emphasize that. Um, that there should be kind of. Um. Uh, kind of flexibility or like a, a creativity in applying store standards that we're not trying to like replicate old houses in twenty twenty-six or whatever. Um, and you can imagine that. That could also be used to inspire how housing is looked to have some kind of reference to, you know, the way the foundry has referenced to. Ever so, I think it's, I think the one point is, I think that there could be creativity in reflecting the past of that site. In the fact that now it's housing, and the second one is that it's part of the historic. District and there are guidelines that, standards that apply to all of the historic districts regardless of what happened to be on that building site before, so. Now it is owned. For mixed use and residential and the historic. Standards apply and, you know, I think, I think.
This, the second part of the question. Is, is revelatory, does a rezoning that allows more varied uses rather than primarily residential by the proposed PMU better fit the historic? Character of this particular area, and I think what they're getting at there is traffic, um. There are lot, you know, there are lots of, there are many more controls on traffic and approvals. Um. Contingent upon some solving traffic problems in an early phase in a, in the PMU. They don't exist at all in the I one, um. So. That's, that's a big difference, that's a big modification. In a good way, I think. Anything else on that? Topic? Wait, but by creating a designation of PMU, the working draft is more limiting than the current permitted uses. Listed in the zoning update slideshow, does that seem? Right, page five of the draft calls for non-residential uses at five percent minimum, ten percent max. How can we articulate a clearer manner perhaps at the outset regarding? Housing type section, what has been done to remove potential conflicts with the limitations that's? Oh, that's a separate question? There, okay. Well, the first on the, the five, the five and ten percent. Um. Can we talk that through, Ted?
Yeah, I, 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 you know, the, the recommendation for the site was, uh, in the comprehensive plan was very clear is to. Um, allow for some mixed use, but to make it very limited, um, that this would be primarily a site that would be developed with residential uses. Um, and that, you know, the village already has two, um, fairly, um, uh, fairly large business districts, um, and that. You know, given the, um, the traffic and, and the fact that the site is somewhat out of the way for the rest of the village. Is, didn't seem to be appropriate to have, um, uh, any kind of significant commercial development on that. Property, but to make it more convenience, uh, sort of, of, um, commercial use. Like the office, personal services and retail, uh, and to limit in that manner, and that seemed to be a, um, a, a very small. Part of the overall development, um, that the emphasis would be on residential, um, but to allow for some, some of that convenience, um, non-residential.
Um, I, I think that the slide they're referencing, you had taken a screenshot of the existing I one and bracketed uses in the I one.
Yep.
And yes, the point, the point was to eliminate some of those possibilities on that site. And that traffic generation from those, from those uses.
Correct.
I think, you know, if I could chime in.
Yeah, please.
I think that when you think about, um, like residential side streets versus the commercial areas. The commercial streets are much busier. Um, residential side streets don't tend to be super congested. So for that reason as well, I think. A large residential development there is more appropriate than an industrial thing. Um, so I, I, and I, and I do agree that this is. What we're doing is following the comprehensive plan recommendations, housing is needed, not more commercial districts in the village.
The next item is regarding the housing type section, what has been done to remove potential conflicts with limitations of what is outlined in the HTRB language, I think we've already addressed that, yeah? Yes, yeah, it's a five removing the formation. Standards. Okay. So then there's a series of questions about planning. Board procedures, and again, I, I think it's important to reiterate that. The planning board will not be. On its own, um. The planning board has not had consistent training in many, many years, it is sorely needed. On an annual basis, it's required by New York State, um, and. Training specifically around regulating a PMU district is a totally reasonable. Training for the planning board to imagine, so some of these questions are, you're not going to be by, the answer is you're not going to be by yourself. How does the proposed planning board review process for the PMU PUD at Marathon compared to our standard site use review process? How can we make the planning board's role and responsibility clear and feasible with respect to the measures by which we would review the concept plans and consider stakeholder input? It is partially driven. By seeker, um. Partially driven by code, but also you're, the planning board is in charge of the process. Right, the planning board is in charge of soliciting. Input and deciding how it manages it. Um, thoughts there?
Yeah, and I, and I think to add to that, um, one of the things which, which we have in the code now is a whole new section on special use permits and site plan approval. And it provides a consistent approach that's, uh, very similar to what many other communities, um, have been using and, and these are communities where training. Is done on a regular basis, and I would certainly encourage, uh, the planning board members to go with. Training, the Department of State has training, Pace University has training, there's a number of individuals that do training, um, many of the planning, um. Planning boards, county planning boards will do training for that, I know there's a lot done in Duchess County. Um, I've seen some sessions specifically on things like planned unit developments. Uh, site, site plan review process, I've actually worked with the Duchess County Planning Federation on presenting site plan review. Training sessions for planning board members, so these are things that are done, um, on a regular basis, and it certainly. Would be to the planning board's advantage to, um, to go through this with, with others and to be able to, to, uh. You know, to be in a room with colleagues and to talk about, um, and trade, you know, planning board experiences, um, you know, and try and get the most out of the training sessions that are held.
I feel like we're giving the planning board, not just in this zone, but in the overall update of one thirty-four tools that they didn't have. And tools that we're getting, we're replacing tools that were out of date, right, we're replacing with tools that are compliant with what New York State requires. Um, we're laying out, we're laying out. The parameters of a process that's very specific. For the largest undeveloped site, there, there are tools that did not exist before. Um. That's my feeling, um. There are so many specific questions such as designs of street, water, sewage, traffic, these remain very vague in the draft. However, these are exactly what the planning board needs to understand and review. Are the plans to expand procedures or include specific parameters for approval outside these areas? And to address these areas, and well, part of it is that this happens as, in, in the, in the application process and in the site plan. Process, right, not in the code.
I think they're asking, are there thresholds or are there, you know? Numbers, and so is that, is it typical Ted to have these kind of, um? Uh. Layout these different areas that need to be addressed, but without numerical thresholds or something like that?
What we have, we do have, um. We do have a street. Chapter, right, there, and there are state requirements for roadways. Sorry, go ahead, Ted.
Yeah, no, I, you do have street specifications, there are water and sewer specifications in the village code, uh, traffic is something that. Uh, you know, the traffic engineers, that's what they're trained to do is to provide. Designs that are in accordance with nationwide standards, and so you get two traffic engineers, one working for the applicant, one working for the planning board. They get together, they make sure that, um, you know, the, the traffic designs are in accordance with, uh, with standards that have been established and in use for decades. So these are, these are things that are pretty much pro forma, um, in the review of site plans and, uh, and projects like the kind that would happen on. Uh, in the PMU district.
The next item, I think, is we've addressed in a number of ways and in conversations tonight, um. There are little or no, in, in their, in the planning board's view, there are. Little or no, little to no provisions in the procedure for approvals to confirm appropriate access to and from the PMU area. A prerequisite for any development, ensuring that the development does not create traffic problems that will unreasonably affect current residents, um. I, I think we've addressed that this evening. Does anyone have continuing concerns about what is required in terms of? Traffic study prior? In the concept plan stage?
I think it's very clear, I think we've actually made it. Very clear, and I'm not, again, I'm not. Exactly. Understanding what. What language they think is missing from. The process to make it any more clear about what. The fact that traffic sites have to be done and that we will have two. Different, um, consultants who will be looking at this at three phases, yeah, I, I, I think it. Unless. I mean, I don't know how mu, how much more plain language it could possibly be unless you haven't read it. So.
I, I also don't. It seems like they're suggesting that the village should be doing these. Studies in advance to. The coded code update, and these are expensive studies. That would be then taxpayers' dollars. Being spent rather than the developers.
Right, so based on what, we don't.
We're doing their work. Why would we do that work on the behalf of the developer when?
But all the. Studies at this stage would be. Um. All projections, right, because there isn't an application in, in front, the idea here is to shift. all projections, right? Because there isn't an application in front. The idea here is to shift the burden off the village and onto the developer who wants to benefit from the redevelopment of this site. That's who should be paying for traffic studies. That is, is the party with, with whom the burden of proof lies. And that's who, that's who bears the cost. And that's how it's supposed to be. It was never like that in the village before, until Chapter 57 was introduced. That wasn't possible. So thanks to, thanks to Marie and the previous board. We, the village now has escrows and is reimbursed. This is the next step. And as it relates to the PMU, the developer should bear the cost. Does the rezoning of the RB and other zones, as well as the adjustment of definitions, appear to achieve the stated goals of reducing nonconformance and making the approval processes more efficient and reflective of current character uses? I think it does. Thoughts from anyone else? Okay. When the, when will the village board of trustees provide the statistical data of conformity pre and post this proposed zoning that the village board has said in the beginning will be provided? So we have talked this through. The provision of Ted, you want to talk about the role the county plays in the in the development of that's nine o'clock and I'm starting, starting to drip out my ear. The role that the county planning board will, will play going forward with parcel analysis?
Well, there is an e-parcel functionality to the Putnam County website that allows for all of the data that's been collected for each parcel related to deeds and to size of lots and what are the buildings on lots and what are the sizes and what are the, what are the estimated you know, setbacks and so forth. They show in a very suggestive way where buildings are actually located on lots, but it's not a survey drawing of the site. And in order to really arrive at you know, when the, the question is statistical data of conformity pre and post this proposed zoning, the only way to really do that is to commission a survey of every site to know what is the current conformity of each parcel in the village. It's, it's an exhaustive analysis. And I'm not even sure that, I don't know of any, any community that's, that's done that sort of thing. Generally, what happens is many of the county planning departments or county planning boards will supplement the data that's provided in the real property tax data, such as the e-parcel data that Putnam County has. They will supplement that with a an assessment of what zoning district each lot is included within for that particular municipality. Duchess County, for instance, just north of Putnam, has done that for all of the communities that, that have zoning. They've run through an analysis of the zoning district, but that doesn't tell you the conformity. And really there's, you know, other than going out and measuring, knowing where the parcel boundaries are and determining, you know, what's the distance of the building from the side lot line or the front lot line, you know, how you know, how, how conforming is that particular lot? And there's lots of lots in the village. I, I don't know how you would even begin to do that.
Well, I think it's, go ahead Paul, this was your, this was your area of work.
There are two areas that you can get accurate data on, and that is lot size and lot depth and lot width for a standard rectilinear lot, lots that are irregular. You can't do that. Those are the only two criteria you can determine whether or not a lot is conforming or non-conforming. Whether the current system or the new system. So we've gone through and done it pretty boldly, but in order to understand, you'd have to go through that whole process again and analyze each one. Because he, because some lots have changed districts in the, in, in the rezoning process. So you'd have to redo that whole thing, but it would only yield those two criteria and not anything with setbacks or anything like that. You just wouldn't get that information. The, the, the county says, don't use our map for that. They're not accurate. And there are no other maps apart from, as Ted points out, surveys of actual properties that, that you can do that with.
Well, non-conformities will always exist in any zone, in any community, right? Zoning is is looking at, at uses and dimensions in areas, not particular parcels. And there, there are always instances within a zone where one parcel or multiple parcels don't comply. They're called existing, pre-existing non-conforming uses. This is very standard zoning reality. Jonathan, do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I mean, yeah, that, that's exactly right. In a, in a village like Cold Spring, that's older, you're, you're gonna have a lot of non-conforming properties with modern zoning.
And with any zoning, because it's, it's before zoning.
Right, exactly.
And, and, uh, created an RO district that would reduce the area required, which meant that all of those lots that are in that are no longer non-conforming because they fit that criteria.
Yeah, I think.
There is reduction, but again, we can only really analyze just the area and the dimensions of the lot and not setbacks, but not height or any of that without getting surveyed of every property.
Yeah. And from the like broad perspective, we have a current zoning law that was built for suburbia that ill fits
Everything.
the village. And so I think that this is, that the proposed changes are like a reasonable advancement of making it a bit more catered to the village. And so it's not not quite adequate for all of these, the things that we said in it's. But it's, I think it's like a marked improvement in recognizing what we have on the ground.
I also think that we moved kind of away from form base. And I feel like that comment is really related to the form base. Like if we were doing perfect form based zoning, then that comment would make more sense. But since we're doing something less form based oriented.
A draft.
Yeah, I think that maybe the comments just related to the earlier draft.
Page nine of the public engagement piece, there's a lot of work for the planning board in terms of engaging stakeholders. How could this be described more procedurally? What is the actual impact of the feedback from village boards and community stakeholders? I think that's been made very clear with the modifications to that public engagement portion. And continuing concerns there? Eliza? Okay, so the next step with this is a draft written response for the planning board based on the conversation we've had this evening. Read?
Yep.
All right. There are two letters that I would like to read into the record and poll or in part as, as we go into the public comment session. So we'll start with these as public comment. One is dated 6/6/2023 to the Board of Trustees. Some residents oppose more lenient home occupation regulations in the zoning chapter of the village code update. In reality, many people already pursue their vocations or augment their incomes from home offices and studios. Attorneys, accountants, talent managers, insurance agents, voiceover artists, photographers, writers, musicians, designers, recipe developers, stylists, therapists, and many others already conduct a large portion of their work from home. How in the world could the village develop a mechanism to enforce laws curtailing home-based, home-based vocations anyway? Since the onset of remote work driven by the pandemic, many professional offices have managed to lower their overhead costs by continuing remote employment for many of their workers or adjusting to a hybrid arrangement. This has often resulted in growth and profits as well as improved employee retention morale and work satisfaction. There are other soft benefits for our communities stemming from a greater number of people working from home. These include, but aren't limited to, improved neighborhood security, less pollution and traffic congestion due to fewer commuters, lower transmission rates of colds and flu, and for individuals, more disposable income due to the reduction of commuting, professional clothing, meals, and auto maintenance costs. It's vital that the village board update the zoning code to reflect and accommodate changing employment trends and address the stressors affecting working people. One area that remains particularly difficult for working families to manage is child prayer. There are far too few quality preschools and after-school programs available at all. Personal income, in-home nannies are a luxury only within the reach of the highest earners. Too frequently, the cost of childcare of any sort is beyond what parents can effectively manage, often reducing the value of a second income to barely above the break-even point. In 2004, while a law professor at Harvard, Senator Elizabeth Warren, published a brilliant book, The Two-Income Trap, which definitely illustrates this dilemma affecting lower and middle-income families. There is no need for Cold Spring to encode restrictions that hinder the expansion of childcare options in the village. New York State regulations pertaining to home-based childcare do more than enough to protect children in neighborhoods. Taking measures to alleviate problems facing our residents is the most important work of our village government. From managing local services to protecting our safety, protecting and providing for the safety and care of local children should be at the top of our agenda. Oppositions in neighborhood childcare homes ignores a national crisis faced by too many families and how these operations can improve and protect village life for everyone. Sincerely yours, Emlyn Miller, 30 Bank Street. Oh, this is a new one? I received June 6th. Yep, okay, sorry, I missed this one. Stated 6/6/2023 from Jane Silver Tim at Seven Rock Streets. My sincere feelings, thoughts, et cetera, regarding land not yet approved by EPA are that I could not recommend anyone to live or work on that Marathon property. I could not live or work on that property. Jane Silver Tim for meeting 6/7/23. Unfortunately, I cannot attend. Thank you for that one. Was that it?
And then, and then this one.
Okay, so this letter from Sina Hudson is a four-page letter. I'm not going to read all of it. It's available on the table. It's also available online. I'm going to read into the record the summary of the letter. Is that okay with everybody?
Yes.
Sina Hudson applauds the village for considering the zoning amendments contained in proposed local law number one of the year 2023. These proposed amendments will provide a comprehensive update to its outdated zoning code as recommended in the Village of Cold Spring Comprehensive Plan. Many provisions of those proposed amendments will result in a positive impact on the community. In addition, we strongly support the proposed rezoning of the West Point Foundry Preserve from I-1, Office and Light Industry to PR Parks and Recreation, which is consistent with the comprehensive plan. We do, however, suggest that museums and cultural uses be added as a use permitted by special use permit in the PR District and that the code includes some flexibility and dimensional requirements when adaptive reuse of existing buildings, buildings as proposed. Night call. Further, Sina Hudson supports the addition of the PMU District because we believe it can help revitalize the former Marathon Battery site in a manner consistent with its location in the village's historic district, the National Register Historic District, a New York State-designated scenic area of statewide significance, significant coastal fish and wildlife habitat, significant biodiversity area, and as a neighbor to the West Point Foundry, Foundry Preserve. Finally, Sina Hudson respectfully requests to be added to the list of stakeholders as per Section 13412D2G. And we recommend that the proposed zoning amendment make optional the requirement for non-residential uses such as office, personal services, and retail. Sina Hudson hopes these comments will be helpful for the village and that the zoning amendments will be adopted in a timely manner. Dear, sincerely, Jeffrey Anzavino, AICP, Director of Land Use Advocacy, Sina Hudson. And just on those items, we've had some of these have been accommodated in Ted's revisions, right? The adding the stakeholders to the list. It was I think the recommendation, correct Ted, of the, of the working group that the minimum not be dropped for non-residential use at Marathon, because we are trying, we are trying to develop mixed use. And there was a fear that if minimum was pulled back, then you'd end up with nothing but residential and, and lose the goal of mixed use on that site.
That's, that's correct.
Does that seem a reasonable response? Eliza?
And I think, did we, we also addressed, did we address the museums and cultural uses of the special use permit in our district?
I think so. On the table Ted, I think, I think that the working group talked about it. Is it addressed in the table?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the question?
Museums and cultural uses. We just want to make sure.
Yes. Yes, they were addressed in that revision to the table of uses.
So on to public comments. I want to say a couple of things. We are going to have a three-minute limit tonight. If you can't say it in three minutes, put it in writing. The tone and tenor of public comment has generated significantly over the course of these hearings. It's not productive. And neighbors with legitimate concerns and questions have been discouraged from participating. And that's not okay. Comments this evening will be respectful and polite. There will be no ad hominem attacks. Questions and comments that contribute to the public process and make for a better final product are welcome. Speculation, fear-mongering, rudeness, and attacks are not. This is the warning, the only warning. If you can't regulate yourself to participate in the process appropriately, you'll be asked to leave. But we're going to start the three-minute timer. If there is anyone, is there anyone first online who'd like to make comment? Seeing any hands raised? Okay, is there anyone in the room who'd like to make public comment? Very early, starting your timer now?
Uh, when will this recording map be available online?
It's on my line right now. This afternoon.
I understand correctly that all comments and questions that I pointed out be on the website by end of day tomorrow.
145 of them will. When the others are done, they'll be made available. Also, the public comment period is still open.
I would like to obtain a hard copy of the revised EAF and Chapter 134.
Sure.
I've sent that request to the village clerk for 134.
The village clerk is out this week. We're happy to provide them to you. So you want the EAF?
Right, the EAF Dimensional Table. Zoning map and table of uses.
The map is now incorporated within the chapter. So when you get the chapter, the map, you will see it.
Okay, I got the chapter at two o'clock. There was no mapping.
Ted, is the chap, is the map in the chapter that's posted on the website?
It's not going to be in the new text or in the redline text versions. It is in the version of the document that is ready for adoption. Yes, both tables are in there. Table 6A, Table 6B, and the map are all in there.
Say that again Ted, because Marie interrupted you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where is it?
Yes, the map, the table. Both tables are all in the, the clean version. It's not in, you're not going to find it in the new text or the redline version. You're going to find it in the, the clean version. And that is I can, I can put it up on the screen if you'd like to see it. Uh, but they're all, they're all made a part of it, so.
Ted, it, it might be easier for the public if the map were made available as a standalone document as the drafts were.
Sure. Sure.
That's to make it easier for me to early.
That would be fine. Yeah, but that, the idea was to create one cohesive document that would be part of local law number one of 2023, so that when you adopt it, you adopt not only the zoning, but also the two tables as well as the zoning map as one unified local law.
Chapters 101, 140, you know.
They're already there. They've been there since the weekend. We'll talk about them next week. 104 and 76?
101.
We've already answered this question, Marie. They're not on the table right now. This is the process we're doing right now for 134, 76, and 104. 100 is the next chapter to be reviewed. There are three chapters that need to be reviewed next. We've already been through this. Parking, vehicles and traffic, and short-term rental. They are not being done at this time.
101, 140, both referred to.
I understand that, Marie. You've made that clear. We're aware.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the room? Who'd like to make a comment? You're out of time, Marie. Anyone else who'd like to make a comment? No, Marie, you're out of time. Anyone else who'd like to make a comment? You can put it in writing. We're done, we're done with your three minutes. Hearing none? Motion to adjourn?
Good everyone. Thank you.
Good night.
Thanks for staying, sticking with us for the long haul, Jonathan and Ted.
Okay.